Three, two, one. Welcome to the 2021 WGT the Education Matters Kenosha Unified School District School Board Candidates Forum. I'm your host Karen Sconzer. There are six candidates running for three seats this spring. John Kim, Eric Meadows, Atifa Robinson, Samuel Ruchnick, Christine Schmeling, and Rebecca Stevens. All six were invited to participate, but three candidates declined or were unavailable. The candidates present for today's forum are Atifa Robinson, Samuel Ruchnick, and Rebecca Stevens. The Kenosha Unified School Board election will be held on Tuesday, April 5th. I'll explain the format and the timing for the forum in a moment. But first, as a matter of full disclosure, I want to say that I'm also an associate professor of education at Carthage College in Kenosha. And therefore, I have a lot of experience with various KUSD schools. I am also a former KUSD parent whose child attended from K through eighth grade. I no longer live in the district, so I cannot vote for any of the participants in this forum. I will also note that we are recording this forum from our own homes today. So there may be glitches in sound or unexpected visits from pets or family members. So the format for our program will be as follows. Each candidate will have up to 60 seconds to introduce themselves and to tell us why they're running and their qualifications for the position of school board member. After that, I will ask a series of questions and each candidate will have 90 seconds to answer. I'll give a 10 second warning as your time is running out, so please adhere to the time limit as well as you can. The order of the candidates will rotate with each question so that you will each will have a chance to answer for a second and third and then go back around again. At the end of our time, each candidate will have a chance to give a very brief closing summary or a statement. So we'll start with introductions and opening statements. You'll have up to 60 seconds each, and we're going to start with Ms. Robinson. Go ahead and tell us about yourself and why you're running.
Hello, everybody. My name is Atifa Robinson, and I am running because I want to empower our Black and Brown children to be successful throughout the community. Historically, we know that our Black and Brown students have had challenges with math and reading. So the goal, if elected, is to improve learning for all students, strategies for parents and teacher engagement, and to come up with fiscally responsible activities for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our next candidate who's going to introduce themselves is Samuel Ruchnick.
Buenas tardes amigos y vecinos. Me llamo Sam Ruchnick. Soy candidato para la posición de borde de directores de la escuela de Kenosha. Soy padre en el distrito. Soy enseñé matemáticas en Indian Trail el año pasado. Y si votan para mí o para alguien más, por favor, voten el 5 de abril. And I'll say in English too. My name is Sam Ruchnick. I'm a candidate for KUSD school board. I'm also a parent in the district, and I taught math at Indian Trail last year. Whether it's for me or for someone else, encouraging all folks to please get out and vote on April 5th. And I'm Sam Ruchnick. Thanks.
Thank you. And then our third candidate for to introduce themselves is Rebecca Stevens. You're muted.
Okay, let me try that again unmuted. So I'm Rebecca Stevens, and I'm running for school board again. I just feel like the work needs to continue and that my experience and knowledge of what's happened over the years is extremely helpful. We've gone through some really difficult times with the pandemic, and so we've got a lot of really uphill battles to fight to get where we want to be with the school district. I know we can do this. I'm positive that we get the right mix on the the school board, and we've done a great job even in difficult times. So I'm looking forward to continue that work. I want to see improvement for all students, support for the teachers, the staff in the buildings. I've worked at at the schools. I know how difficult it can be at times. And just the experience that I have over the years with working with children and volunteers. And really, I have grandchildren that are in KUSD now. So I honor and respect the work that's being done, and I know that we need to support them at a board level, everyone in the building, so that we can continue to reach all of our students. So thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we're going to move on to our questions, and we're going to start with Mr. Ruchnick for the first question. And then all three of you will answer the same question. He's just going to go first. So first question is, due to lost enrollment and state spending changes, budget cuts are coming. So what will your priorities be for the coming school year, and what would you look to cut?
Interesting question, because there's definitely a deficit on the horizon, and our three-year rolling averages does paint a grim picture. It's complicated when it comes to school board budgets. It's a matter of state, national, as well as local policy. So, you know, having been a teacher last year, something that I'm a big advocate for is increasing teacher pay, compensation, and prep time. However, I'm also realistic and understand the constraints of a budget that, you know, we have to be financially responsible with. So something that I've been harping on that I think would be second best to more prep for teachers and that I know students would love is a 60-minute lunch recess for staff and students. It would be almost entirely free at the high school level. It would be very affordable at the elementary school level, especially if we can partner with parent volunteers coming in as lunch recess supervisors. But when it comes to teachers, I mean, the current 30 minutes isn't enough for us to be able to, you know, help students go to the bathroom, also eat lunch, maybe grab a drink of water. But at the same time, you know, students need that time to engage socially so that they can come back to class and focus on academic outcomes. So Wisconsin DPI has already got it in there. 30 minutes of recess goes towards the counts towards instruction time. It won't make the day any longer. So yeah, that's one thing that I would suggest as a solution, a 60-minute lunch recess for staff and students.
Okay, thank you. So next is Rebecca Stevens. What will your priorities be for the coming school year and the budget, and what would you look to cut?
Well, we have to continue to look at our big-ticket items such as health insurance and things of that nature. We have gotten gotten some very creative approaches to that to help cut quite a bit out of the budget without cutting anything that's academic or sports or extracurriculars or anything like that. So administrations on top of it, they've been updating us. They're doing a tremendous job. They're leaving no stone unturned, and we will be able to meet that without any additional layoffs for staff. We have people that will be retiring, so there there may be areas where we don't refill positions and things of that nature. And as you know, the number one, which it should be, the number one cost is staffing and and benefits. And so that right there really helps make a difference. And just being creative with how we approach things. And I gotta say, our district administrators and our Dr. Orem Seth have done a wonderful job with really looking in in depth and target and finance. So we've got a good plan moving forward, and I'm excited that it's going to be something that doesn't create a lot of extra stress for any of our our children or our student, our our parents and our staff. The main thing is, is that we have to look and be very careful as we move forward with everything we do when it comes to our budget. And we also have to be proactive about reaching out for more money from the state and federal government. Thank you.
Thanks. And Ms. Robinson, what will your budget priorities be for the coming school year, and what would you look to cut?
Oh, that's a great question. For me, my budget priorities, if elected, I will be focusing on making sure there's mental wellness, resources, math and intervention resources at all schools. I'm not currently looking to cut. I echo what Rebecca is saying. Currently, our departments have and our leadership team have looked at all the different aspects of what is needed. I'm looking to look for additional funding as far as grants to fund some of the resources that we would need to keep each school going, you know, productively and make sure that each teacher also have the resources they need. The other thing that would be a priority is special education. Making sure that that special education have like resources they need around like sensory rooms when there are special needs students. So we can have more information and resources or literature around like emotional needs. So for me, top priorities will be working on mental health, math and intervention, special education, but not looking to cut because I feel that Tarek and our leadership department have a good handle on it, but but just looking for ways to increase funding so we can sustain our budget fiscally and come out of a deficit. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. So now we're going to move on to question two. And we'll start with Mrs. Stevens for the first respondent. Question two, teacher shortages are already a big problem and are likely to get worse as the last of the baby boomers retire and fewer people are going into teaching. How do you propose to attract and retain enough qualified teachers to KUSD?
That's a great question, and it's a challenge that people are facing nationally. So I'm all about growing your own, and I think that you're from Carthage and in the teaching and learning department, and we've created partnerships there, created partnerships with UW Parkside. We, some of our high school students are getting a head start on the track of going into teaching because we have created these opportunities through our local colleges. We really have to work together, and we have to identify students early on. Also, I know they're reaching out to the University of Chicago to try to recruit more teachers of color, brown and black, and some other creative ways of looking at what we can do to bring new teachers on board. It's really important that we're able to keep their wages at a good level and the benefits and the workload is is crucial. So we have to continue to improve in our district to make sure we are giving all the additional supports we can possibly give all of our staff that work so hard in the building because they're on the front line. And without them, we will not, we will not do well at all. So I think there's a lot of creative things that are happening right now, forming those partnerships. And it's a continuation of some things that have already been started, but really getting involved and getting teachers in earlier. Don't wait till the end of their training time to get them to the classroom. There's a lot of creative things we can do, and it helps them because then they have a mentor teacher right there with them. So yeah, a lot of good stuff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Robinson, you are next with this question. What should we do to attract and retain enough qualified teachers?
I think Rebecca hit it on the dot. Early education is the key. And what I will say is, when I was younger and I went to school in a different county, and order to retain more teachers, they would actually have internships within the school systems. And so they will introduce teaching positions as early as 11th and 12th grade throughout the district just to encourage and bring awareness to the position. And then the other thing was competitive wages, making sure there were competitive wages so families would be able to provide for their needs while they're teaching. And so I think that's going to be the key is making sure there's a diverse background, working and hiring people from different backgrounds. And I diverse, and I'll say Black and Brown, people with disabilities, those who speak different languages, including sign languages. Those different barriers will help to increase and retain the workforce. Because what we do know within our school district, there is some language barriers. And kids learn better when they have different diverse teachers. When you diversify the workforce, I'm an outsider see that, it makes them empowered to want to work in that type of district. So for me, I would say early education is the key. Start diversifying the workforce, having competitive wages, and then funneling out, working with different agencies throughout the community to hire and retain. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Mr. Ruchnick.
Yes, a great important question. And what the other candidates said, I would want to continue as well. Those are great efforts that are currently being made at the earlier stages of the pipeline. We got to get more more people into the teaching pipeline. However, one of the things that I think would be just monumental, and I think that any school district could implement something like this and be really successful with it, is bringing the joy back to teaching by empowering teachers to have more control over their curricula. I mean, you'd have to partner with the whole community because like curricular developments and redesigns have to be inclusive of the whole community. But you you have these educational experts. Why don't we use them? Why do we have these prepackaged standardized curricula that the teachers have to spoon? The teachers don't want to, but you got to spoon feed, and the kids are getting this. I just, I feel like if you bring the joy back, yes, raise compensation whenever possible. But if you can't, I mean, even whether you can or you can't, you gotta make teaching more enjoyable. You gotta empower these teachers to have more freedom, the students to have more choice over what they're learning. I would get questions as a math teacher, great questions, and I'd be like, ooh, I want to answer that. I want to spend the rest of this class talking about it, but we got a quiz on Friday. I'm sorry, we gotta, you gotta study for that. We gotta get back to the, get back to the curriculum. So yeah, bringing the joy back, empowering teachers to have more say in a curricular redesign focused on making it fun and shortening the standardized part so that they could focus on the many fun elements of math or whatever discipline they're teaching.
Okay, I'm just going to take a quick reintroduction break. This is Karen Sconzer, your Education Matters host for this Kenosha Unified School District Candidate Forum. We are here with three KUSD school board candidates, Atifa Robinson, Samuel Ruchnick, and Rebecca Stevens. All six candidates were invited, but not, the other three were not able to make it. So my next question, and we begin with Ms. Robinson for this one. What do you view as the primary strengths and weaknesses of the Kenosha Unified School District?
Okay, and that's a great, great question. I think the strength of the unified school district is that we have so many resources. The weakness of the unified school district, they're just not equitable across the board. Every school system right now, each school needs something different to thrive. And I think that's going to be the key as we get past the election. Doing that SWOT analysis, like you said, the strengths, the weakness, the opportunities to thrive within the school. So I think we would need to take a mapping and go into every school and look at those resources and those resources that's lacking, whatever funding that's lacking, and make sure that we can provide that so kids can continue to thrive. But I think those are the the strength. We have a lot of resources, but weakness, it's not equitable across the board. Teachers don't always have what they need. Students don't have what they need. And parents don't always have what they need in in order to help the student. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Ruchnick, your chance to answer this question.
Yes, well, I think the shortcoming at the systemic level in KUSD is the curricula. It kind of sucks. Yeah, I don't want to focus too much on the shortcomings. I just addressed how I think curricula could be improved by de-standardizing it and empowering teachers through a teacher-led redesign. One of the strengths, there's a, there's many strengths. I mean, the teachers are incredible here. Everyone that I've worked with has been incredible. The students are brilliant. The the parents are great, too, like the parents that engage with me. I mean, it's it's the perfect triangle, this, the student empowered by the teachers and parents to be successful. But I think the one thing that we do particularly well that sets us apart, that could be a model for this country, is the way that KUSD does public charters. Charter schools have a mixed reputation. And, you know, Milwaukee, just north of us, the the home of choice in the nation, hasn't always had, especially early on, didn't have the most success. KUSD does a really good job of partnering with our public charters in a way that, and not to say that it's perfect, but we can always improve these things. But we do a pretty good job in partnering with our public charters and ensuring that there is still a community level of direction from from KUSD. And I think that, yeah, my son goes to K-Tech West, which is a public charter. I'm a big fan. And again, there's things that we can improve within our charter system, but I think we have a really great model that could be used as a as an example to other districts.
Okay, and Ms. Stevens, if you could do the the same question, strengths and weaknesses?
Great question. Well, I have to say, I am so impressed with, and I and I always have been with our extracurricular activities. I mean, the music program, the theater programs. Atifa and I were just over at Bradford last Saturday. We were invited to go see Revival with the Dance Corps over at Bradford. I mean, it's amazing. And then, of course, all our extracurriculars with the sports activities and things that really keep kids connected and excited about being part of the school environment, because we know it's it's, they need that hook. They need that extra additional support and involvement. As Sam mentioned, those instrumentality charters that we have, K-Tech, we've got several, Brompton. I don't want to, I'm not going to name them all, but I've always been supportive as a board member. And I remember my first charter school I got to vote on was K-Tech. So that was super exciting, and I do have some grandkids there, too. But then I'll go back to what Atifa said, and really that equity. And equity is like, to me, it's, and we simplified it with a very simple answer. You get two pencils, one person gets a sharpened pencil, and one person gets a pencil, and it's not sharpened at all. And they have no tools to sharpen it. So when we look at our schools, we have to look at what are those real needs? It has to be equity, not equal. So thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. So now we're on to question four. Mr. Ruchnick will be first. How much time have you spent in KUSD schools and which ones? How did these experiences motivate you to run for school board? And you've already talked a little about this, but go forth, tell us more.
Cool. Thank you. I think it's vital that candidates and board members get into the schools. Physically, I've been in Roosevelt. I mentor there right now. I mentor some students at Roosevelt. I've been at Indian Trail, taught there last year. I've been to K-Tech at their aftercare. I work at their aftercare and morning program through Kids Castle. And, you know, drop off my son there. I've been there for student or parent-teacher meetings. Trying to think if I've been inside other schools. I've been invited to a few that I, some of whom I've been able to take it up on. Roosevelt was one of them, or the first. But I've connected with all of the principals in the district. I've made an effort to reach out to every principal and get a list of, you know, what are the things that y'all are doing right? What are some of the things that y'all are facing that are more challenging? And it's been really insightful getting to understand what the different needs are in these different schools and hearing it straight from the mouth of the leaders. So yeah, I encourage all candidates, those here and those not here, to definitely make efforts to connect with school leadership, at the teachers. I try to keep an open, open-door policy to teachers. I make my number public. I love talking education with everyone involved, all stakeholders, but yeah, get inside those schools if you can.
Okay, thank you. Rebecca Stevens.
Could you just repeat the question? I want to make sure.
How much time have you spent in KUSD schools and which ones? And how did these experiences motivate you to run for school board?
Well, it all started many years ago. And I was a parent at McKinley Elementary, and I got involved because my children were there, but not just because my children were there. I saw the needs, and I saw some of the kids that needed that extra support that, you know, the teachers only had so much time and energy. So I was a mom that was involved right from the get-go, PTO, every, you name it. I was there saying, how can I help? And classroom help, and it really helped to open my eyes to what what has happened over the years and and public education and how we really need to be involved in a positive way in our children's and their friends' education. It really does help. So I'm in the schools now a lot because I do run a volunteer program. I have a quite a good-sized mentoring program. And we do quite a bit over at Lincoln. We work in all the schools if they want us. Greveno is in Southport. I mean, there's several schools. But I think as a board member, what I'd like to see us kind of come back to because it's been hard with COVID, and and we weren't able to be in those schools. And sometimes our kids weren't either. So I think in our grandkids. So I think what I'd like to see us do is, especially at the high school level, reach out, set up a time through district administration and set up some time where we get an opportunity to meet with some key high school students. We did this years ago when I was on the board, and it just, it feels so right. We have so many super bright students, and they have a voice, and I want to hear from them, too. So, yep, that's what I would do.
Thank you. And Atifa Robinson, how much time have you spent in KUSD schools, which ones? And how have these experiences motivated you to run for school board?
Wow, I've spent a lot of time in KUSD schools over a decade ago up until, I say, this year. And so, because I worked in KUSD. And so I've been in the following schools of Bradford, Lincoln, Wilson, Harborside Academy, Rutherford, Whittier, Forest Park, oh, Stoker. So I'll stop right there. But I've spent a lot of time, and then this year I got to go into head start virtually with my team. For those who don't know, I am a nutrition administrator through UW Madison, and my educators to actually go into the school systems in Kenosha and Racine County to educate on healthy eating. So I got to watch the little kiddos. And then last year I got to work with individuals from all different schools and talk to them about mental health and health and wellness and access to healthcare. And so for me, it has empowered me to continue the work. I've sat on Rutherford Parent Board. I sit on the Harborside Foundation Board because I have two students in the Harborside Academy School. It has empowered me to continue the work, make sure that every student have what they need. And it just was a great experience to actually learn from the students. Because sometimes we assume what students need and teachers need, but until you actually go in, you find out there is a array of issues that need to be addressed, and you learn it firsthand. So.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we're on to question five, and Ms. Stevens will be first for this one. I'm going to love this question. How do you ensure that every member of the community has a voice, including through effective, productive, and cordial school board meetings, which may have been amiss this year?
Well, that is a really good question, and it's been hard for everyone. I guess I I would like to see that the decorum return to the school board meetings and that we follow the guidelines that we have laid out before us through what a school board does and what a school board's purposes are. And I think we have to help educate parents on that as well, that we basically, our our first line of duty is to hire a superintendent that runs the district. We work with administration, but we don't run the district. They do. And they bring things forward to us, and we work and give suggestions and work together with them. But certainly, it is the administrators that 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 really, they get paid the big bucks, and they do the hard work and bring it to the board. And I think there's just a lack of understanding and training about what a school board member does. And so, and and we weren't able to do this in COVID, and I've shared this with Sam and Atifa. What's really nice is when I first ran for school board, how many years ago, I got enrolled in a program where I sat down with the the board attorney, and he, it was me and several other people. And he, he told us what our responsibilities were. He laid it out through policy and 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 everything that we're supposed to do. And then he also said, and this is how, you know, and then there's, there's the finance side. So people don't understand it, and they need to be more patient and ask more questions and really educate themselves on what it is we do. I think that will help bring the civility back. Thank you.
Okay, and Ms. Robinson?
Can you repeat the question again?
Sure. How do you ensure that every member of the community has a voice, including through effective, productive, and cordial school board meetings, which have been amiss this year?
Oh, wow, that's a good question. I open space for people to communicate with me. There's times I've been at the school board meeting, and there's times where someone who don't necessarily agree with my stance have had, put me aside, can I talk to you just for a few minutes? And so I open space, whether it's through phone calls, through email, through face-to-face conversation, just to discuss how people feel. And then any information that they share with me, and they want to move it forward, I make sure it And then any information that they share with me and they want to move it forward, I make sure it goes up to leadership. And so that we can address it and move it forward. And that's how I make people feel um that their voice matter. By one, actively listening, communicating, and making sure I push their needs forward to leadership. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Ruchnick, if you could answer that question, how do you ensure that every member of the community has a voice? Including through effective, productive, and cordial school board meetings, which have been a miss this year?
Yes, I think reactively and preemptively. Reactively, I would want to stay. I already stay after board meetings. I go out of my way to engage with parents. Who show up regardless of whether they show up politely, angry, whatever state they're in, I go out of my way to engage with them after meetings. Uh, preemptively, I'd like to see students, especially high school students from our student government associations. Uh, maybe the big three, Tremper, Indian Trail, and Bradford, would like to see at least a student representative from each of them. Have the floor at the beginning of these meetings, every meeting. And have two to five minutes, maybe. Just give us the happenings, uh, what's happening in your school. What concerns you might have, what issues you might have. They're already in a leadership position, so involve them and get that student voice in there. Um, and additionally, I'd like to see uh more uh opportunities for for parents to engage with me. Uh, not after meetings, but like going into their space. So like, there's a whole bunch of community members that don't feel comfortable coming into board meetings. Maybe they're intimidated. Maybe, I mean, I remember when I first came in, seeing all those board members up in their chairs, it's, it's a little intimidating. Um, so going into their spaces, being public about it, I mean, shoot, I've got my personal cell phone number on all of our, all of my campaign literature. So, reach out. I I love talking about education. The whole community is welcome to reach out at any point. Uh, and I'll continue to make those efforts to include them.
Okay, great, thank you. Uh, this is going to be a great question and Ms. Robinson, you're gonna be first because that's the order it's in. So, most scientists and medical specialists expect COVID nineteen to become endemic. Meaning that it will return in new forms, similar to the seasonal flu, but with effects that are very specific to COVID. If there's another wave of COVID in the coming school year, how do you think the district should respond?
Um, if there is another wave of COVID, I feel that the um district should respond in the way they have continued to respond. Um, sitting down with leadership and they come up with a recommendation and then coming to the board and the board chimes in. To make sure that, one, everybody stays safe. Two, that we're implementing a plan that's in the best of the district. Because for me, I'm a person that, because I worked in public health, you need a timeline and a roadmap that we roll out to the community so they know what to expect. And I think that, you know, the district has done a great job with that so far. If you actually go to our website, you can read over our expectations. There's some um language there for you. Just in case um the pandemic does hit, and it does outline our expectations of what will happen next. Just in case there's a surge, then we'll, and it's something really critical, we'll rethink that at that time. But I think just having that timeline and roadmap is definitely going to be the key. Thank you.
Okay, um, so Mr. Ruchnick, if there's another wave of COVID in the coming school year, how do you think the district should respond?
I I want to first point out that the challenges the current school board has gone through are unprecedented. And they've had to make decisions on a lot less information than I get to comment on tonight. So I I just wanted to point that out first before I say. Um, I would do everything in my power to avoid re- a return to our current virtual platform. I am a big uh critic of the current virtual platform. Um, if uh, you know, I I I, thinking long and hard about it, I think. If we were to have situations where kids cannot be in school, uh because there were situations where it was not safe, especially at the start of this pandemic. Um, you still want to, or at least the perception was that it was not safe. You want to still provide those in-person options for those who are willing to put themselves in person, especially understanding the damage. That it can do socially and emotionally to kids. So that would be something that I would want to avoid at all costs is going virtual. However, if students had to learn from home, even then, I do not want our current virtual platform. I don't want them in front of a screen all day. Let let there be a whole set of assignments that the teachers can, over the summer, you know, like, in advance at least, not like spur of the moment. For them to be like, all right, we have like twenty assignments here that we might not get to, but any day that we got virtual. Both parents consult the list, do one of these assignments with your kid or have your kid do one of these. Or parents, this is what we will be asking your student to do and maybe check in with us. Uh, and let let us know that they've done it. Anything to avoid the current sit-down synchronously for seven or eight hours in a row alone in your room. Anything to avoid that, that must be avoided at all costs.
All right, thank you. Uh, and Ms. Stevens?
Well, hopefully, um, COVID will kind of peter out like a flu and. People will continue to follow guidelines to get vaccinations and take precautions if they do, if they are ill. Following those CDC guidelines and really public, getting those out to the schools and public, making a very uh pub- a lot of publicity surrounding that information. Um, I think the biggest thing that, and and again, I want to avoid closing schools. I want to avoid uh going virtual. I uh I've seen with my own grandkids how quickly, you know, it's, they get tired of it really quick and I don't blame them because we're social creatures and we want to be out there. And I think if everybody does their part, it it will work. It will continue to work and and uh, you know, if you're sick and you're, you've had a COVID. Wear a mask for five extra days. Do things that not only are just for you, but for the general public to keep those numbers down. And I think it's just important to continue to follow those guidelines because if our hospitals get overwhelmed or. Um, you know, other things happen in our community. It's going to make it difficult to get everyone the care they need and we have to be cognizant of that. But really, I think that we're in a good place right now and I hope it continues to go that way. But if we do have a surge, I would ask everybody, just do your part. Let's get through this. And let's not have a lot of hoopla about it. If we have to put on a mask for a couple, you know, i- if if I personally have COVID and I have to put on a mask for five days. To to be able to be active in the school, that's what I'm going to do. So I think we just have to keep reminding each other, we're all in this together. What do we do to make it the best possible outcomes for our kids? And I agree, we need to keep our kids in school to the best of our abilities. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, I just want to reintroduce. Uh, this is, uh, my name is Karen Sconzer. I'm your education matters host for this Kenosha Unified School District Candidate Forum. We are here with KUSD School Board Candidates, Atifa Robinson, Samuel Ruchnick, and Rebecca Stevens. Uh, there are three other candidates who are invited to participate, but were either unable to or chose not to. So uh, I have another question. The first person to answer this one will be Mr. Ruchnick. How do you support school professionals during this tumultuous time? How would you assess whether or not they are feeling supported?
Um, I don't know if I can ask a clarifying question. School professionals being like teachers and staff.
Staff, principals.
Okay, cool.
Anyone, front office staff, whoever.
Yeah, uh, I think this is where my leadership background really comes into play uh in the Marine Corps. You, one of the early leadership lessons is, you know, wherever you can, take responsibility, whether it's for a good thing or a bad thing, take responsibility. Uh, actually, when it's a good thing, try to give responsibility to your subordinates. Uh, messaging, I think messaging is important, making sure that like constantly, teachers are getting the messaging. And students are getting the messaging. You guys are awesome. You guys are rock stars. You guys survived pandemic education. Wow, heck yeah. And you know, like, I I know that messaging is only part of that. Um, but it it is a big part of it, making sure that our culture, our our school culture is one in which teachers feel supported. Because I know that it didn't feel that way, uh, the way that the messaging was handled, uh, the way that some folks would would speak uh about. Uh, teachers sometimes, and I know that that is not the majority of the community. I've I've seen bipartisan uh and overwhelming support for teachers. And I I think uh finding pathways for nonpartisan solutions to i- i- improve the culture. Uh, make it a kinder culture, ma- make it a culture where people feel welcome uh and who want to show up. Um, and uh, yeah, I guess just wheel spin in here. I mean, maybe something that we could do is. Is is make sure that our professional, our PD days, the professional development, like, I would have loved to not have a prepackaged lesson given to me by someone else. Give me my math head, let her come into and give me some advice. She is awesome. I'll give her a shout out. Janet Carpi诺, she's a badass. I loved working for her. I would love experts to 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 teach their stuff.
Okay, uh, and Rebecca Stevens, you're next.
Well, I um, I continue to support staff and in the buildings, uh, teachers, principals, support staff. They reach out to me much of the time when they have an issue or a concern. And I bring that forward to the superintendent and we talk about what can be done to help. Make our staff feel uh more valued and more appreciated, especially during these difficult times. And I think that's just something you have to continue to do over and over again. And you have to build that trust relationship with them, too. Um, and this year, it's been really difficult for parents and teachers and uh the board, everyone, administration. Um, because there are so many things we haven't been able to do to show that support. But visiting the buildings and just stopping in and saying, hello, how are you doing? Um, you know, picking up the phone, returning those calls when there are concerns shared with you. I continue to do that over and over again. There are some things, unfortunately, we cannot change. And so I will listen and I will say honestly, I, that's something I can't, it's out of my power to change it. Um, there are certain guidelines from the federal and the state government that's attached to funding. And I do my best to do my homework then and share back. Um, just like with the the issues that we had with uh parents being so frustrated about certain things this year. There were some things we couldn't do anything about, but I could listen and I could have empathy and be kind about it. So, thank you.
Right, uh, and Ms. Robinson?
Um, I can say the same. Um, I do get teachers that reach out to me um to address certain concerns. And you know, that is something I always say as well, that um we handle policies and, you know, I make sure those things go up to leadership. Um, so they know that things are actively heard. If I've even had students reach out to me about issues. Um, because they wanted to help a teacher and they didn't know exactly how to help the teacher. So the student reached out. And then I reached out to leadership. And I think that's the way to empower um and support our teachers, administrators throughout the district. Is just making sure that whenever they come to us, I mean, that's a, and there's an issue, just making sure to not um. I I will say it like this, never rattle the situation, but make sure that you're calming the situation down. Making sure that you're saying, okay, I do understand that you're frustrated and just validating their emotions, you know? And then forwarding it up to leadership. Because I think a lot of the times that teachers reach out because they want to just have a voice. Um, they want to have a voice just to know that they have support throughout the district. And then telling them, you're doing a great job, you're and empowering them and motivating them is what they need to continue the work.
Okay, so believe it or not, we are really at the end of our time together. So I'm going to give each of you sixty seconds to do a summary or closing statement. Um, and then we will say farewell. So we're going to go in this order. It'll be Rebecca Stevens, then Atifa Robinson, then Samuel Ruchnick. For the closing statements. So, uh, um, Stevens, if you could start, please?
Well, I'd like to say thank you, uh, Karen, for the opportunity to share more with our community. On our thoughts on uh what it is to be a school board member for Kenosha Unified School District. We've got a great district and we've got a lot of uh great things still happening that's still carried on even through some really difficult times with COVID. But we're just going to continue to build on that and move forward. And continue to build a really strong school district where every child has an opportunity to learn. Every child has an opportunity to be part of something larger in the community if they want to be in sports. Or if they want to be in the music programs, theater, dance, whatever it is, so they have a a chance to expand their education. Uh, working with parents and and administrators and and staff, just to to really uh. Connect with them, to let them know how much we care and how much we appreciate. And how much we need to work together to improve the issues that we face these days. So, thank you.
Okay, uh, and Ms. Robinson, if you could answer that, tell us uh your summary statement.
Um, hello, everybody. I want to say thank you for just inviting us on the platform, Karen, as well. Um, this year, in the past couple of five years, I think our teachers, students, and administrator. Administrators have had a lot of challenges trying to improve the learning environment. And I feel now more than ever, in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, we have those opportunity to create plans. That can help move our district forward with unity, fiscally responsible um activities and resources. And make sure that everyone can get through um the pandemic as well as virtual or in-person learning, depending on if it's optional or not. But I just thank everybody for staying the course. And I ask that as we move forward, continue the work. We, as the school board, do see all the great work that's happening through the district. And if elected, I want to continue to help each and every one of our students thrive. Thank you.
Okay, and Mr. Ruchnick, your closing statement, please?
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you for the opportunity to the viewer or to the listeners at home. Thank you for your interest in education. It is vital that we stay partnered. The whole community needs to be involved for what I see to be a very dire situation. I talked through the pandemic. I'm a parent in the district. I've seen it and I've looked, read up on it. I've I've studied the past twenty years of national and state educational hurdles. That have been uh putting more and more on the teachers' shoulders, on on students' shoulders, on parents' shoulders. Um, and if we do not unite and come together as a community to address these things. There is just too much for us to address alone. So um, I've been working on 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 being uh as inclusive as possible, and I'm going to continue that. I want to encourage teachers, uh, parents, uh, community members to please reach out and stay involved. We got to keep on working together to improve the education situation and provide every student, get back to providing every student uh an excellent education. So, thank you. I'm Sam Ruchnick.
Thank you uh to our listeners for joining us for the Education Matters Kenosha Unified School District Candidate Forum. Uh, thank you to KUSD School Board Candidates, Atifa Robinson, Samuel Ruchnick, and Rebecca Stevens. We appreciate your willingness to serve and we appreciate the willingness of all six candidates, even the ones who were not here for stepping up. To run for school board. It's an enormous challenge just to run. And I just want to thank you all, all six of you, for choosing to do that. And thank you to our listeners for tuning in. Don't forget to vote on April fifth.